I'd like to call to order the meeting of the July 18, 2018 Frederick County Planning Commission. If you would, join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. First item is to adopt our agenda. If there's no changes to the agenda, I ask for a motion to approve.
Move for adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Our next item is our committee reports. Our first report is from our Comprehensive Plans and Program Committee. Mr. Marston, I believe, has the report.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Comprehensive Plans and Programs Committee met on Monday, July 9, 2018, to discuss the 2018 requests for Comprehensive Plan, Policy Plan amendments, which is CPPAs. Two of those amendments were discussed by the committee. One, the Carter Track inclusion of 231.5 acres in the Shore and Water Service area, a long-range land use amendment to designate the property for industrial land use, and tax amendments to the Comprehensive Policy Plan. And the second one was Waverly Farms, inclusion of an additional 145 acres in the Swazza for the future mixed-use commercial and industrial uses. These items will be discussed in a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors at a date to be determined. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Our next report is from our DRC Committee. Mr. Unger.
Yes, sir. We met June 28. The first thing we talked about was shipping containers. And we tweaked it a little bit, and it's going to be coming to the Planning Commission, I think, tonight. We did support the text amendment until we got redone for it, so hopefully, you know, you all see the same thing. But if not, we'll hear about it. Discuss and request to allow the site access parking space, load zoning, and circulation within delineated riparian buffer. This request was initiated by a private consultant. The item was presented and did not receive support from the DRC, so that will not be coming. Zoning District Buffer discussed the request amendment of the Category A buffer, requiring to allow parking to locate as close as 10 feet from property line if screening is provided. This request was initiated by a private consultant also. The item was discussed with the DRC, and we did not support that one either. Off-street parking discussed the request to develop off-street parking and site access requirements for primary land use within a limited portion of the property that are split-zoned. And the request was initiated by a private consultant, and that also did not receive support by the DRC, so you won't be seeing that one either.
All right. Thanks, sir. Next one is Transportation Committee. Mr. Oats.
Yes, sir. We met on June 25 and had four items. The first was a presentation by the Sheriff's Office of a safety software that they use. Basically, it's a GIS map, and they can zoom into a particular intersection, see how many crashes have occurred, the damage, what was the cause of the accident. Through several years, it's a good tool to look at our roads for the future of where we need to concentrate some funds for safety. The second item was a resolution of support for our SmartScale application. Finally, I have that ready to go to the state. Third was a resolution of support of TPOF funds for the intersection of Route 50 and Independence Drive out at the Navy Federal facility. And fourth was a resolution to be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors for the comments for the I-81 corridor study that was, I guess that's been about six weeks ago we had that meeting down in Stralsburg.
All right. Thank you. And do you also have a report for Frederick Water tonight, or no?
No, that's Mr. Unger.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Unger, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. We met last night. The first thing I want to talk about is Frederick Water just got approved by Virginia Water Protection Individual from DEQ. They've got their permit now to draw eight million gallons of water out of the Pecking Creek when it's at its proper levels. And this has been two and a half years of trying to get this accomplished, and they finally got that the other day. So they were very happy about that. And they adopted a resolution to support the Health Commission recommendation to the town of Stevens City to acquire a water agreement with the city of Winchester. The town has sought the Commission declarations to prohibit Freddie Waters from shutting off water service to the town. The Commission advised that such an action was not appropriate. The Commission advised that the town had a requirement to provide water to its customers, and that it should enter an agreement with Winchester to serve the water. They also wanted to do that if Stevens City wanted to do it. Adopt a resolution to support meditation for the town of Stevens City to resolve this difference. You know, if we can get that resolved, and somebody will sit in there and listen to it, we'll do it that way, or they'll do it that way also. The customer base is over 15,732 connections. Monthly water production average was 6.13 million gallons per day, which is kind of normal for the summertime. It goes up a little bit in the summer. The Stevens City Dill Quarry is up considerably. All the quarries down there, at least two-thirds, are more at full now, and they're really got an abundance of water in them. The Clearbrook Quarry is up about three feet from what it normally is in April, so that one's also looking good, too. That's it.
Thanks, sir. Our next one will be our liaison from the Winchester City Planning, Mr. Loring, tonight.
Mr. Chairman, the City Planning Commission held its monthly meeting last night. We had three issues. None were public hearings. Two were reviews of ordinance to vacate and convey city property. The first of those was 156-foot alley between 407 and 411 Van Fossen Street that passed. The second was less than a half an acre along the west side of National Avenue, Piccadilly Street, roundabout. That was noted in the paper today. This resulted in a tie vote. The third action was a site approval for an office building on Linden Drive, which is on the east side of the medical complex. This passed. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir. And our last is our Board of Supervisor Liaison. Tonight, we have Supervisor McCarthy.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. At our last meeting on June 27, the Board of Supervisors took up two items. One was to pass a resolution declaring a local state of emergency for Frederick County as a result of the enormous amount of rain and the aftermath of that. The other item was to set a public hearing to discuss appropriation of funds for New Ailer Middle School, and that public hearing is set for our next meeting, which will occur next Wednesday, July 25, 2018. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. We're going to, next one is our citizen comment portion, and we'll do things just a little different tonight. Since we have no public hearing for our action item, it was thought best that if anyone wanted to speak, the items on the action items or the agenda tonight, this would be their time. We'll also offer this time for, under citizen comments. So if there's anyone that would like to come forward to speak, this is your time now. Seeing no one, I'll close citizen comment portion. We'll go to our next item.
Mr. Chairman, I'll need to recuse myself from the next item, as my firm provided surveying services for it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Oats. Our next item on the agenda is an action item. It's rezoning number 1-18 for Stonewall 4, submitted by Walsh, Kaluchi, Lubaly, and Walsh to rezone 88.91 plus or minus acres from the RA District to the M1 Light Industrial with proffers. The properties are located in the southern terminus of Lenore Drive, Route F-732, and are identified by property identification numbers 43-A-21, 43-A-21B, 43-19-4, and 43-A-24. And if I mispronounced any of those names, forgive me. Ms. Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. As you stated, this is a request to rezonate four parcels of land that total 88.9 acres from the RA District to the M1 District with proffers. Now, you may recall, this item was postponed at your June 6 meeting for 45 days to provide the applicant additional time to address some of the transportation concerns that were discussed at the meeting. So since that June 6 meeting, the applicant has provided revised proffers that seeks to address those concerns. Now, for brevity, I'm not going to go through all the proffers that were discussed at the last meeting, as those have not changed. So there's really only three transportation proffers that have been updated since the June 6 meeting. Now, first is the updated proffer 2.2, and this discusses the access to the property. It states that it will be shown as depicted on the GDP. Provided that access to the buildable area of the property is not impeded or eliminated, the applicant shall not place above-grade improvements on the southeast corner of the property near the terminus of Lenore Drive in such a way as to preclude the construction of proposed slip ramps that are currently depicted on the eastern road plan, now, which was created by the county. So, excuse me. So the southeast portion of the property is also encumbered by some easements that access to additional property. So there's updated proffer 2.2, which states that within 90 calendar days of written requests by the county, the applicant shall further dedicate such right-of-way as it may own at the terminus of Lenore Drive for the purpose of construction of access to existing 37, as described in proffer 2.2, which I just went over. Now, that pertains to the slip ramps that come from 37 onto Lenore. And the updated proffer 2.4, and this states that the applicant shall contribute up to $250,000 to the county for the purpose of planning additional access to Stonewall Industrial Park. It shall make such contribution at the rate of 30 cents per gross square foot of building ultimately constructed to be paid at the issuance of the occupancy permit. And that's the GDP that was included in your agenda. That remains consistent with the original package that you saw back at your last meeting. So with that, it was a very brief presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have. Mr. John Bishop is here. If you should have questions, we're seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to forward to the board. And also, the applicant is here, should you have any questions for them.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions of Ms. Perkins? Mr. Unger.
Candace, I don't know whether they ask you or John this. Can you explain to me what a slip ramp is?
I can go over general locations that's shown on the map. Zoom in here a little bit. Now, the subject properties that you can see on the screen are outlined in red and black, red and black, my apologies, yellow and black. You have Lenore, I'm having trouble here with this, my apologies. You have Lenore Drive, Route 37, and the slip ramps are shown in this general area.
Okay. I understand.
But it is just general locations on the map at this point.
Any other questions, Ms. Perkins? The one question I would have, the money's dedicated for our discretion, yours discretion for, is it dedicated just for Stonewall Industrial Park? Is that what's my understanding?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come forward? State your name.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, my name is John Foote from the firm of Walsh, Kaluchi, and you did pretty well on the Kaluchi part.
You got me on there.
Lubala.
Lubala. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Das ist ein gut deutsche name. He's German. Well, actually, he's as American as me and you, but this is a German name. And I do represent the applicant in this case, and you've all met Dan DeLalla before over there, and you know John Callow from visits with you before. I'm going to be very brief, just as Candace has been very brief. We did have further discussions with the staff about the transportation issues out here, and to make the slip ramps more possible, the dedication of the land that we control, and I think everyone knows that the triangular/trapezoidal piece downright against 37 is not owned or controlled by the applicant in this circumstance, that whatever right-of-way that we control, we, the royal we, will be dedicated. In addition, there's approximately 800,000 square feet planned for the development on this property, and that works out to 30 cents a square foot to get you up to a quarter of a million dollars. Now, right now, it is provided for Stonewall Industrial Park because that was what we were trying to address. I've had a brief conversation with Ms. Perkins in which she said, would you care if we said that it's for planning purposes and construction? We would be happy to remove that restriction. And in fact, we don't care if the board wants to use that money for some other purpose related to transportation improvements. That's fine with us. We did that proffer the way we did that proffer for the obvious reason that we were trying to address Stonewall Industrial Park. But it is of little concern to us how the county wishes to use those funds. We're willing to provide them and would make the proper change between here and the Board of Supervisors with your favorable recommendation. As you know, the transportation impact analysis that was conducted in this case demonstrates that there is very little truck traffic that's actually coming out of it and doesn't affect the function of any intersection. As a consequence of the approval, it's planned for industrial purposes. I believe you're aware that one of the issues that we are hoping to help address is available space for businesses that want to make use of the inland port. So it's not just Stonewall Industrial Park that's at issue and involved here, but the inland park is a hugely valuable resource to Virginia and to, when you've got a building that will come in and be a taxable resource to the county, and yet provide storage space for businesses that will ship their materials through the inland port, we think it's a more global resource as well. With that said, unless you have questions, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, we'd be happy to answer them. That's my presentation for you this evening.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for Mr. Foote? Mr. Klein?
The 17 acres you're giving to the county?
The what?
The 17 acres you're giving to the county? What kind of value you place on that?
My goodness gracious, I don't know, but it's, that land is expensive, and so whatever we're giving up is land that we're giving up for free, and the 17 acres back there is very, is, it's, you'd have to value it at the fair market value of the rest of the property, even though some of it's topographically challenged. An appraiser would not break that off and give it a different value, as you know. So it's costly ground.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Unger.
Just curious, you were saying that quarter of a million dollars, you didn't care where it went, it went to the county or to Stonewall Industrial Park?
No, I'm sorry. No, all, it would go for the purpose of Stonewall Industrial Park, but it'd all go to the county.
Okay.
No, I'm not giving this to Tom Gilpin, trust me. We were talking earlier about the county raising funds in some way to throw a big party, and I was going to get invited, but no, that's not what's happening here.
I understand.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
String off of it.
Okay. We got it in front of us. Discussions, anyone? Anybody?
At least if it's school.
They got any thoughts?
I think it's probably more than what we could have anticipated, and I think it, certainly the applicant has gone quite a distance to assist in helping the traffic problem there. So I really think we ought to move it forward.
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Nobody else has got anything to say? I moved rezoning 01-18 for Stonewall 4.
Have a second?
Second.
I'll do a vote. Mr. Unger?
Unger, yes.
Marston, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Unger, yes.
Klein, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Bolden, yes.
Willmont, yes.
Triplet, yes.
Dawson, yes.
And Chair votes yes. This will go forward to the Board of Supervisors for their August 8, 2018 meeting, and we thank you guys. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is an information discussion item. It's self-storage facilities in the RA District. Discussion on revisions to the Frederick County zoning ordinance to allow many self-storage facilities in the RA rural area zoning district as a conditional use, requiring approval of conditional use permit, CUP. Mr. Klein?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Again, this is an ordinance amendment that you all have seen previously, and under our current zoning ordinance, as you all are well aware, storage facilities, self-service are allowed in our B2 general business, B3 industrial transition, M1 light industrial, and our M2 industrial general zoning districts. The Development Review and Regulations Committee discussed this item again at the recommendation of the Planning Commission at their May 24, 2018 meeting, and took a look at a prior proposal and recommended the following supplemental uses for facilities in the RA zoning district. Again, as Mr. Kenny said, it does require a conditional use permit as well, that all developments shall conform to the B2 general business district standards unless the self-service storage facility is screened by natural vegetation or topography, and that all developments shall have direct access onto a state roadway. Following your discussion this evening, staff is seeking comments from the Planning Commission on those proposed text amendment to allow self-service storage facilities as a conditional use in the RA zoning district to forward to the Board of Supervisors, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Any questions for Mr. Klein? Thanks, sir. This is a discussion item. Do we need to discuss? Again, questions?
You know, the concern I have is similar to that convenience store we had out on Route 50 a couple meetings ago. There's going to be light pollution from a self-storage area. There's going to be problems with crime. There's going to be trash. Unfortunately, when people either move things into a self-storage or move them out of a self-storage, there seems to be a lot of packing materials that are somehow disposed of, not necessarily in a very environmentally sensitive way. So I, I'm a little concerned about this, that in an industrial park or in any other areas, you have neighbors who have some influence and are able to help police, and there's more self-policing done on self-storage areas. We start putting them out in rural areas, which I don't really have much of a problem with, but I think we have to have some more criteria, I guess I'll say. Otherwise, we're going to end up with a lot of complaints. And, you know, again, this is another conditional use permit where somebody's going to invest half a million dollars in building self-storage facilities with air conditioning in, and we're never going to revoke the permit regardless of what they do there. So I would hate to see us just put this in as a conditional use without giving the applicants at least a heads-up somewhere in the ordinance that, you know, there's going to be a lot of criteria on this. There's going to be lighting, noise, trash disposal, stuff like that on it that's going to make it that it's not so offensive to the neighbors.
I agree. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I guess I'll just add, since it has to be built to B2 standards, that means it has to be paved, they're going to have to have a trash receptacle, it's got to be fenced, it's got to meet our ordinance for lighting standards, and since it is a CUP, if it is a highly populated area or a lot of houses nearby, probably wouldn't be in favor of it. But I'm looking at this as more places that have 10, 15, 20 acres, especially if they have some old barns they're not using anymore, they want to convert those into a storage area. So I'm more comfortable with it being a CUP and doing case-by-case than making it by right and putting a lot of restrictions on it, because if it's out in the middle of, say, a 20 or 30-acre field, you know, building a bunch of screening and everything out in the middle of nowhere doesn't make a lot of sense. So that's why I think it's better to do a case-by-case on this one.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just a comment. I agree with Roger about the lighting, but that's going to be controlled when they do it. But as far as traction stuff, just the facilities that I know of, they're very, they're kept up very clean. As a matter of fact, you never see any trash around them, so I think the owner wouldn't be as busy as he would be if it was a trashed-up joint anyway, so I don't really think that's going to be a problem.
Any other thoughts? If not, I'll entertain a motion to move this forward, if someone wants to move.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
This will go, this item will go to the, also to the August 8, 2018 Board of Supervisors meeting for their review. Thank you. Our next item, under information discussion, is shipping containers. Discussion on revisions to the Frederick County zoning ordinance to restrict the use of shipping containers, i.e. prefabricated durable steel shipping containers, also known as intermodal containers, cargo containers, or ISO containers as an accessory storage in certain zoning districts. Again, Mr. Klein?
Yes. Good evening again. As you all are aware, this is an item that was previously discussed before this body and also was discussed by the Board of Supervisors. And as Mr. Kenny stated, it's to prohibit the use of shipping containers as accessory storage in planned residential districts. That would be your RP, your R4, and your R5 district. The current zoning ordinance does not specifically address shipping containers as accessory storage. This item was previously discussed again on April 4, and the Board of Supervisors discussed it on May 9, and the Board of Supervisors provided a very specific set of comments that they would like back to the Development Review and Regulations Committee for additional revisions and consideration. The DRC again discussed this item on May 24 and June 28, and they've made additional revisions to the proposed text amendment. So what you're seeing this evening is a clean text amendment that takes into consideration the board discussion and also the discussion among the committee members following that board discussion. The DRC recommended that the following restrictions on the use of shipping containers as accessory storage, that in no case shall a shipping container, i.e. a prefabricated steel shipping boxes, be allowed as an accessory use or storage in the RP residential performance, R4 residential planned community, and R5 residential recreational community zoning districts. They further stated that shipping containers are allowed in other zoning districts as accessory uses and storage, and should meet the applicable setback requirements for accessory uses. And that would, again, depend on the district that it was locating in. Following a discussion this evening, staff is seeking comments from the Planning Commission to forward to the Board of Supervisors for additional discussion, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Any questions? Mr. Klein? Mr. Oats?
Two. First would be, now this ordinance just basically handles the complaints and the issues we're having in certain areas of the county to clean up the ordinance, so you all have more enforcement ability, right?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Tailored for that one particular item. And then the second is, if a shipping container were to come in on one of those lots, but it has, they put siding on it, put a truss roof over it, basically make it look like a shed, or basically it's inside of a shed, would it be allowed then if it's within a facility?
If it's completely enclosed and that the enclosure meets the applicable building code standards, then yes, it would be allowed, and it meant setbacks and those kind of things. But if you're going to go through the trouble of building around it, why would you not just build?
Because there's steel, and you can lock them up and be a lot more secure.
Sure, absolutely. But yes, in that situation, as we discussed at the committee, it would be allowed.
I had that question posed. I mean, I just wanted to clarify. Thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Unger?
I thought we put an acreage restriction on this, did we not?
In previous iterations of this text amendment, there was a requirement that for shipping containers being used as storage on RA property, there was a minimum acreage threshold. At the board discussion, they specifically said that they did not support setting an acreage restriction, and they actually did not support restricting the use of shipping containers on RA rural areas property, and that was removed. At the DRC discussion, and it was included in your memo, and will also be conveyed to the board, the committee did express reservation about not restricting shipping containers on RA property, but did not have a recommendation regarding minimum acreage or if that, there was not consensus that that should be included as a restriction. So what you see this evening was what was generally supported by the DRC.
Just one other thing with that. You know, I've been thinking about this thing, and I did like to see acreage go with it, but a lot of the covenants in these subdivisions, when they do two-acre lots or even five-acre lots, don't even allow anything over three-quarter-ton pickup trucks sitting in driveway. They don't allow RVs in there. Most of them don't, but you can put a shipping container back there. It makes no sense to me.
That's a private issue.
What?
It's covenants. That's a private issue.
I know, but they're going to go there. That's why I think an acreage is important.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to move this forward to the Board of Supervisors.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Mr. Klein?
Aye.
This will go also to the Board of Supervisors for their August 8, 2018 meeting.
Done.
They'll have a full agenda that night. Seeing nothing else, our next meeting.
We'll see you on August 1.
On August 1 will be our next meeting, and there's nothing else. Come before us. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second. All those in favor? All right. We're adjourned.
See you, Billy.[1791.38]